Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Hamlet City Council. At this time, I would call the meeting to order and would ask for a moment of silence. Amen. Council, you have before you tonight is agenda. What are your wishes on that?
Move that we adopt as presented.
Excuse me, can we add the budget amendment that we didn't have time in the special meeting to talk about the budget amendment wherever you see fit?
Thirteen A.
Thirteen A. Budget amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion, we accept it with thirteen A added.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further changes? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Item number four is the adoption of the minutes for November the ninth, regular and closed session meetings. I assume everyone's had opportunity to look over the closed session meetings. What are your wishes?
I make a motion, we adopt him.
Okay, motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Moving along to item number five, which is comments from attendees. Scheduled to have a presentation by the HBDA. Is there anyone here for that tonight? Yes, please come forward. State your name and go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Kendell Robinson. Thank you again to the, to Mr. Mayor and the esteemed members of the city council and also Mr. City Manager. So, representing the HBDA as its newest president, I wanted to make sure that we address the city council to say thank you. Old fashioned Christmas went off without a hitch. It was very successful. Thank you for your assistance. The city was lively and vibrant with folks walking up and down the street, so it was a beautiful thing to see. And Mr. City Manager, I know you are especially involved with some of the work, so thank you very much. So, we just want to say thank you and we appreciate it.
And we appreciate your efforts on behalf of the city. Also, we make a good team.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if there's not any questions about anything, that's all we wanted.
Just keep in touch with us.
Absolutely, will do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you.
Okay, you, I had a note here that you were gonna contact Gerard Morrison, am I correct?
Yeah, do you, is, there's, do we wanna see if there's any other public comment before I call Mr. Morrison?
Is there anyone else out there that's got public comment at this time?
Okay, I'll call.
Okay.
Hello, please state your name after the tone and Google Voice will try to connect you.
Hamlet City Council.
Hello?
Hey Gerard, this is Matt, the Hamlet City Council meeting, calling you for your public comment.
Hey Matt, happy holidays, bro. Give me about five seconds. So you pull up the message, uh... Okay.
Well, that was short and sweet.
Hello?
Hey Gerard, we got disconnected.
Okay, sorry about this signal. Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead with your public comment.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Castle. This is Gerard and happy holidays in advance to everybody. And I wanted to invite everyone out December twenty ninth, Wednesday, eleven thirty a.m. until three thirty p.m. We're gonna be having one of the Quanza Day celebrations. It's the fourth day. Swahili term is called Ujama, and it means cooperative economics. And we've been observing the influx of different entrepreneurship that's been manifested.
I can't hear.
In our area and of course nationwide.
I can't hear him, I'm gonna lose you. Oh, you're here, we can't understand.
Hey Gerard, Gerard, I mean you're up here, but we're having some trouble hearing you. Can you speak directly into your phone's microphone? It's a little muffled.
Is that better now?
Not, not really.
I don't know, let's test in one, two. Is that better, Matt?
A little bit, yeah.
I got it. And then to the car makes it, is that easier? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, so I just wanted to invite you all out on Wednesday, December twenty ninth, eleven thirty to three p.m. Excuse me, three thirty p.m. For Quanza celebration, we're gonna be highlighting the fourth day of Quanza, which is Ujama or Ujama, and Swahili it means cooperative economics. You know, Quanza's a pan African cultural holiday. So, it's the different colors that depend on it. Black and gray, and we ask that everybody wears.
Hey Gerard, we're having some technical difficulties here. I got your message about December twenty ninth from eleven thirty to three thirty for Quanza. Can you tell me the location?
It's gonna be Hamlet Senior Citizens Center.
At the Hamlet Senior Center?
Okay.
Right beside City Lake, Lake South.
Right, we're just having a lot of trouble hearing you. So, is there anything else that you'd like to present to the council?
Okay. All right, that one, and then of course wish you happy holidays and mark the calendar for October first, twenty twenty-two for Coltrane. And lastly, in the spirit of, uh, the difference that are going on with the congressional and the state members, that is our favorite topic, Matt. And we want us to be talking about that locally and saying how we need to really look at our community and how we can improve it and make sure there's true and equal representation from all voices and we can be more effective. And as we transition from, as they're doing the pandemic, as we prepare for, for how they're gonna be living in a place like that. So, thanks for that.
All right, thank you Gerard.
All right, thank you, Matt. Sorry about the difficulty, bro.
That's all right, you take care. Have a good holiday.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Is there anyone else has any comments? No one, okay. We'll close the comments section. We'll move along to item number six. Those four items there all deal with reorganization of the board. And at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to the city clerk for the oath of office.
Maybe turn it on right now.
All right, if I could have Mayor Bayless to come down front, please. Help it you on that side. Yep, you in the center. And if you would repeat, is this on? I feel like I'm moist. It is. Aye and repeat your name.
Aye, Bill Bayless.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina, laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office as mayor.
Of my office as mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I present to you Mayor Bill Bayless.
Good, very good.
All right, Mr. Bayless.
Councilman Martin. Councilman Martin, if you come down front. All right, here we go. If you'll raise your right hand. Aye and repeat your name.
Aye, Eddie Martin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a council member.
As a council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I present to you Councilmember Martin.
All right, your turn Jesse.
Are you ready, sir? All right. Aye and repeat your name.
Aye, Jesse McQueen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a council member.
As a council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Can we have Councilmember McQueen? Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause, shall we?
It's easier to get council people than police officers. Now we're back full staff.
Uh, council, at this time, I would entertain a nomination for Mayor Pro Tem.
I nominate our present Mayor Pro Tem, Jesse McQueen, to remain as our Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Okay, do I have any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Mr. McQueen as Mayor Pro Tem, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Congratulations. Okay, at this time, we need to make an appointment of council representative to the Hamlet ABC Board. Who is currently doing that?
Mr. Stewart.
Ah, okay.
Morris.
I make a motion that we nominate and retain Councilman Stewart as our representative on the ABC Board.
Aye, second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, now we need to make appointment for council representative and alternate to the Lumber River Cog. And I believe Councilman Stewart is our current representative on council and, uh, so I would, I would take a recommendation now for council representative.
I move that he remain as such.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a-
I move, I may, I motion that he remain as such.
Oh, okay, anyway, we got it.
I got it.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. And who is the alternate right now? Am I the alter-
Me.
Okay, all right.
I would, I will. I would recommend that we keep Oscar as our alternate.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Let's move along to item number ten, adoption of the regular meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two. I don't see any changes. It's, uh...
First Tuesday and July ninth.
Yeah, first Tuesday each month. Okay, got a motion on that?
I move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, okay. Any further requests for changes? If not, all approve, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. Okay, on item number, uh...
Eleven.
Item number twelve, excuse me.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Yeah, all right, item number eleven is planning board. And what I have here, Ms. Amy Gwynn's term on the planning board expires January the fifteenth of twenty-two. She has agreed to serve another three, three-year term. Council, what are your wishes?
I move, I make a motion that we retain her position.
Second.
Got a second, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. I was trying to read off two different papers here. Okay, this is an appointment by the mayor.
The Hamlet Housing.
And, uh, yeah, the Hamlet Housing Authority Director has advised staff of a vacancy due to health issues. And they have recommended that retired fire chief, Mr. Calvin White, be appointed to that position, and I will do so at this time.
Excellent choice.
Yes, it is. That's a very good choice. Council looking at item number thirteen is approval of submitted tax releases. What are your wishes on those?
Eight thousand dollar refund. I'm trying to figure out where that goes to. Custom care. Who is CoreLogic centralized? Who is CoreLogic?
Uh, I'm not sure, Jill, do you know? A mortgage company.
A mortgage company?
Yeah.
They did what?
She said it's probably just a duplicate payment.
Okay, they got two of them. They got actually three refunds. Oh, they do, they make this mistake often. I'm glad they're not my mortgage company.
The county bills them, and you know the county, they just pay whatever the county bills them, and then somebody eventually looks at it.
It says they billed them-
Says, wait a minute.
Good gracious. Well, all of these are CoreLogic refunds.
Yep.
Except for the-
Their accounting department must have caught up with it.
Okay.
There we go.
All right. I make a motion that we approve. I don't know if we have.
Okay, it's grand total, uh, grand total of eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents.
One second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll move along to item thirteen A, budget amendment, Mr. Christian or Jill, whichever.
Sure. Um, I'll just go over the budget amendments briefly. On the general fund side, it's making several adjustments in the police department, which we've discussed for kind of filling some part-time gaps while we try to recruit more people in the department, which we just spent some time talking about in the work session a moment ago. And the general fund is, um, is actually appropriating money to pay for the front-end cost of the USDA project that council has approved. Those are the two items that are contained in the budget amendment currently. Um, and I think we made some good progress in our work session. And at council's pleasure, we can adopt these as presented. We can also continue our conversations about budget needs as council sees fit. So if there's anything you'd like to talk about now, we can do that, or we can do that in a future work session. But that's what you have presented before you tonight, is the two that I just detailed.
What's the credit core fees?
Um, it's, it's basically the upfront fee that we, correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, but basically we assess when we pay the fees and then we, we pay it out. It's kind of a wash. Is that correct?
That's correct. We had to adjust this because we were anticipating our online payment to be set up by now, so we didn't budget enough. So we just had to adjust that, but it, it is a wash. We, we pay out more money, but we also get in more money off the fees.
I have a question. What, uh, what was the problem with the tsunami cameras that we canceled the lease on?
I wish that Chief Brown, or Chief Brown is still here, he can address that directly, but it, it came down to a combination of functionality and customer service. And we're reallocating those funds to actually purchase cameras, cameras that we'll own, that won't be leased. And it's a, it's a system that we can build on. And if Chief Brown, or if you have questions, he can, he can expound on that, or if you can ask-
Chief will comment on that, and that's where we're going, and if it's gonna be, the system's gonna be comparable and...
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the question, council. What we found was the tsunami cameras weren't delivering the product that they had promised council when they came in. I.e., we had a shooting and literally thirty yards away from the camera, we couldn't even make out huge letters on a guy's shirt. They had made several upgrades to the cameras during the tenure of our, our lease, which would have helped us access the cameras more and been more advantageous for the overall operation. I.e., microphones, they went from a digital cellular format to a, um, cat line, a cable connection, which would have helped. None of that was offered to us. The cameras kept breaking down. We called the company and said, hey, you know, we're not really okay with this. They come out and they said, well, we really can't fit your needs anymore. So, at that point, we found another viable option that is very popular. I've got Captain Terry, he's finalizing his reference checks on the cameras. We're gonna make sure maybe all the due diligence wasn't done last time. We're gonna make sure we do that this time. And as the manager said, we will actually, these are a pod system, similar to what we already have, but when we buy them, we own them. And we have the ability with this camera, we're gonna put one at seventy-four, one seventy-seven, that would be like the mothership. You can link sixteen cameras up to that one system.
Oh, okay.
So they're all linked, so we have to have one, either wifi, either cat, excuse me, I'm not as technical as I should be, but in one connection or one air card, and we can link all these other sixteen cameras to that one. So we don't have to pay the data for all those other cameras. What we're gonna do is put a receiver on top of the theater, since that's our highest point according to Doc. And that way, we can connect to all the cameras, and we own these, so they're ours. And we can upgrade them, we can move them. For what we've paid in the last three or four years, we could have, well, we're getting four modules. We're getting, I wanna say approximately fifteen camera, fifteen, sixteen cameras. We get that every year, and they're ours. And when we contacted the folks, they've never lost any customers due to customer service or product. They've lost two. That's because the police chief come in and said, I don't want cameras anymore. So, we really feel like this is a more viable option long-term for the city. It gives us options of adding infrastructure. We own them. You know, we asked if they ever been shot, two have been shot at, nothing was ever damaged. And what I really like about these, it's cosmetic, it's simplistic, but these actually have the little strobe blue lights on top.
Yeah.
So everyone will see, and they will know that there's a camera there and they're on it.
That's fantastic.
So we can add cameras all over the city. Uh, and it's something we can tie into our infrastructure needs that you guys just approved. We're excited, but again, we're not gonna be locked into this. If we get it, they don't work. We lost four, we got four. We can try something else, but I, I feel like, um, this is gonna be our best option for now.
That's great. Keep us posted on how they-
I will. Uh, tsunami's a great system. I don't have anything against it, you know, when somebody comes in and says, we just can't meet your needs. Don't worry about paying us this last year, we'll come pick our stuff up. So, we gotta find an option at that point, right?
Very good, yes, sir. That's great. Tsunami's gonna be a better system.
I hope so. I hope so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a question? If not, uh, what are your wishes on the budget amendment?
Move that we approve.
Okay, got a motion?
Sir.
Got a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay. City managers report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and council. It's been a great month. It's been a busy month. We had Thanksgiving and, um, that was, went really well. We had several Christmas events that we're very proud of, the success from the parade. Thank you for everyone that came out. Thank you to our city staff. It was really a team effort. We spent months planning and, and meeting and planning for safety and, um, we're actually having a debrief tomorrow to develop an after-action report and continue to build on that success that was that event. And I really appreciate the community and how much they supported us in, in making a little bit of an adjustment to a, a tradition. But I think we've created a new tradition in the process, and I'm really proud of our folks, both internally, our staff, and also our community for, for supporting us. The old-fashioned Christmas, as, um, Kendell mentioned, the president of the HBDA was, was great. All the, the people were in the buildings, in the businesses that were open. I went into every business that was open and talked to the business owner and just made sure that, um, you know, everything was going all right. And they were all very, very happy, and I think that's gonna be something that they build on as well. Last but not least, um, I wanna thank, um, all of our employees who have worked very diligently throughout the holidays and the year. And I think that this next year, I hope, is our best year yet, at least the best year in recent memory. Um, and I wanna thank those folks for all their hard work. I do wanna make a brief announcement. At next week's planning board meeting, we're gonna be kicking off our comprehensive plan, um, process, where we're gonna engage the planning board and then the community in several public engagement sessions throughout the next couple of months to develop a comprehensive land use plan. I'll be leading that up with some staff support, maybe some support from outside folks that can help us do maps and make things, um, make things look good and presentable. But it's a really important exercise for our community to develop a vision for our future. And so, we're gonna be kicking that off next Monday at our planning board meeting with a little map exercise, and then planning some future public engagement sessions and reporting back to city council along the way, as we identify key stakeholders and engage people in the community. Ultimately, that will come before city council for final adoption. So we wanna keep you engaged along the way, not just wait till the end. So, look forward to that, and if you're listening in the public, look forward to those announcements, which we'll share on our Facebook and our webpage. When we're having those, uh, when we're seeking your feedback and your engagement, we want as much of that as possible. So, look forward to that in the coming months. It'll be ultimately, timeline's like a six-month process. We wanna have it for council adoption in June before, um, before the July new fiscal year. So that's something we're gonna be working on, and I wanted to announce that, city council, tonight.
Anybody have any questions for the manager? If not, we'll move along. Mr. Martin, would you?
Well, I don't have a whole lot, but, uh, I'd just like to say I'm back from major back surgery, and I appreciate all the cards and calls and letters that I got from the city and other, others. I'm doing very well. I like what the, I've seen the manager said, so I won't reiterate, but everything is working great. The downtown, uh, uh, Christmas festivities were, were very nice and appropriate. There's one, one thing I'd like to point out, though. Last Saturday, I believe it was, I'm not sure. But Chip Beck, who is the coach and the head man involved in the, um, uh, Hamlet baseball, forty-nine American Legion baseball team, he informed me that they had a tryout, more or less, I guess you'd call it a tryout. And several young athletes came from different areas around the immediate area of Richmond. And today, he was notified that two of the players that were there at the, um, uh, training or showcase or whatever they call it, where it was attended by a lot of coaches and scouts of different colleges. Two of those players have signed with, um, I think it's Methodist University to play baseball. And two others that were there have been offered, they haven't committed, but they have been offered to some other school somewhere. So I thought that was a pretty worthy, uh, thing that the, the American Legion is doing. And most people didn't even know they was doing it or trying out. But it was very successful and, uh, maybe they'll do it again next year with more publicity and have more, more participation. But I just thought I'd bring that to everybody's attention. And of course, we won't have no further meeting- But I just thought I'd bring that to everybody's attention, and of course, we won't have no further meeting between now and Christmas and New Years. So I just would wish everybody a happy Merry Christmas and a happy New Year. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sellers?
Thank you, I'd like to thank the all the employees of City Hamlet, city manager, chief of police, city clerk, and all the clerks, all the people. And I'd just like to, uh, give a big shout-out and a thanks for all the great work in leading us progressive. And I'd like to thank my colleagues on the council and the mayor for the fine work and support that we are giving one to another. And I'd like for all of us to remember the victims in the, of the, uh, tornadoes that were ripped across several states and all the devastation that the people are going through. And remember them in prayer and thoughts, and any way we can, can help or could help, give them assistance, because it was complete, complete devastation in those areas. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas and Santa Claus will be good to all of us. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Stewart?
Uh, can thank your employees enough, city manager, everyone that works for the city. Thank you so very much for working so hard for these, not only all the duration, but definitely throughout the pandemic. Again, we can't even begin to say how rough this past couple of years have been, so thank you very much for that. Uh, my colleagues up here, thank you so much for all the help you continuously to give to me and support. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and just remember Jesus is the reason for this season.
Mr. Mayor, may I add, add one other thing?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd just like to thank, uh, the citizens of Hamlet for giving me another, uh, this is my, will be my third term on the Hamlet City Council. We didn't have any opposition and, uh, but maybe that's a good thing. Maybe nobody wanted the job, I don't know. But either way, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the citizens, citizens of Hamlet for another term. Thank you.
Okay, right. Ms. Covington?
Well, um, I wanted to say welcome back to Bill and Eddie and Jesse and puts us back, as I said, full staff again. I didn't have any doubt, obviously, they didn't have any opposition, but, you know, it's just, sometimes, some things just don't need to change. And I wanna thank everybody who had anything to do with the parade, it was awesome. I had, you know, I, I guess we've been having parades at four o'clock on that Thursday for as long as I can remember, and I've lived here a long time. And when they said they were gonna do it at night, I thought, hmm, I wonder how that's gonna work, but there was so much commitment from the participants to make it special and the lights and it really showed off the Christmas lights in downtown Hamlet. And the music beforehand and, eh, it's not just done by people who are doing their jobs, it's done by people who go above and beyond what's expected of them. To, you know, even the police chief was riding around with Santa Claus hat on. In his car. But, um, and that shows a lot of attitude, and that's a town our size with the resources that we do, does a great deal of functioning on attitude. It, it's not necessarily what you're paid to do, and I wish, you know, with all my heart, we could pay you what you were entitled to and worth and everything else, but we all know that that's pie in the sky. And I wanna also thank the remainder of any of the employees for the years' worth of commitment to this town that they've made under extremely difficult circumstances. It's not been a good year for most people, and it's been a difficult year to do your job. And they have stuck with it, and I'm pleased that we could do something to say thank you in a big way. And also, I would just like to wish the citizens of Hamlet a very Merry Christmas and a happy twenty twenty-two, or the forecast of a happy twenty twenty-two. Stay well, enjoy your loved ones, and stay safe.
Thank you. Mr. McQueen?
Just wanna thank everyone that went out, uh, to vote in November. Um, like the chief said, uh, run unopposed, you don't know who's gonna show up to vote. And it was pretty good turnout, I mean, for a, an election that had no opposition. So thank you for the ones that went out and, uh, and voted, it's really appreciated. And I wanna thank my fellow members in the council for, uh, having the confidence in me to elect me back as the Mayor Pro Tem, I really appreciate that. Um, and just like Oscar said, um, e- everybody up here works with everybody, and that's a great thing. Um, that's not always happened, and, um, it's, it's, it's wonderful whenever that does happen. We might not agree on everything, but you don't want a group of six people up here that agree on everything, you wanna have dialogue and conversation and come to a, a amicable, um, solution. Um, I don't want to just keep talking about the same things that we already heard, but I would just be, um, remiss if I didn't mention the parade as well. That was, that was probably the highlight of my twenty twenty-one, and I'm sure probably a lot of other people. This has been a, a horrible eighteen months. Um, been a lot of bad things happening, that was one good thing. Um, the people that put that on, our employees, um, and I'm not gonna even try to mention not one name, 'cause I don't wanna leave anyone out. But at the end of the day, everybody came together, pulled, pulled this together, um, and had probably one of the best, I'm not, I'm not gonna say probably one of the best, they had one of the best things for the citizens of this town and this county in a long time. I think the people of the community wanted this parade, I think they needed it. I think it brought a lot of positive, um, talk about what we're doing and what we're gonna continue to do. Um, echo on what everybody said, if you work for the city of Hamlet, thank you. If you, um, have, have come in and, and, and done your job during the past eighteen months, um, there's a lot to be said for people that's, that's still, uh, stayed around with us and worked. And, and this council, uh, appreciates it, and we wanna thank you from the bottom of our heart. Um, other than that, um, I wanna congratulate Bill, um, and the chief for the reelection and look forward to the next, um, just look forward what the next couple of years is gonna bring. Um, there's a lot of things that we have that is in our way opposition-wise. Lot of things we can't control, but working together, we can, we can do a lot. We, we've done a lot this year with, with a little, and it's, it's, it's a blessing to be able to say we're in the position that we are now with the cards we were dealt. Um, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, stay safe. Um, and that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you. Now, first off, I'd like to say thank you for re-electing me as mayor, there are a number of projects that we've got going on that I'm deeply interested in, and working with this council has been, the last couple of years has just been great. Uh, it's a good council, they think. Uh, we ran into the, uh, situation with, uh, the money, and they brought this thing around along with the help from the city manager and Jill over there, but they've managed to bring the money back and we're about to get ourselves on, uh, stable ground and hopefully out from under the, uh, uh, out from under Raleigh looking at us over our shoulder, which is gonna be a big help. I, I can't say enough, I, I spoke to the employees at the employee dinner, but I just cannot say enough thanks to all the employees in the city. They have made this city run, and, uh, we look good because of what our city employees do. If you have a problem, give, and you can't get it resolved through the city, give one of us a call, we don't mind. Uh, we're, we're glad to hear from everybody, but we're constantly up here working for the city because, again, we are citizens just like everybody else. Uh, one employee I really would like to just pick out a little bit is, uh, is Michelle Pressler down at the, uh, museum, this was her first year and, uh, she in a learning process, and she has worked herself to the bone to make sure that all these projects go along. So if you get a chance, go down and see the museums down there and talk to Michelle and, uh, see what's going on and give her a little encouragement, but I think she's doing a fantastic job. The rest of the employees, they put together a committee to do the parade, and this was one of those situations where that committee just really worked out well. It was a beautiful parade, as Mr. McQueen said, I don't think we could have done it any better. So we're glad to have that. The, uh, old-fashioned Christmas, uh, I was not able to be down there, but everything I have heard has just been outstanding. And we do appreciate the Hamlet Business Development Association and the city for making this happen. And, uh, we're gonna be doing some updates, upgrades on the street and such for both Main Street and Hamlet Avenue over the next year, hopefully. So that's one of the things we're looking at. We would encourage everybody to shop Hamlet this year, we still have a little bit of time left between Christmas. We've got a number of new businesses in town now and a lot of little unique shops. And I would encourage everybody to go down and just look through, walk down the street and see what they have. And I believe you would enjoy it. The, uh, another issue, we're talking about the issue of the tornadoes in Kentucky. The emergency services agencies in Richmond County this week are taking up donations of, uh, uh, canned goods and water, they're in bad native water up there. Each one of the fire stations is accepting any donations that you'll give, uh, through Saturday. So if you got anything that you, water or whatever, take it to the fire, any one of the fire stations.
For Kentucky?
Yeah, and, uh, we'll be, uh, uh, the first of the week, we'll be loading trucks up, going to, uh, going to Kentucky with these items. So please keep these folks in mind, you know, we're just one step away from it could happen to us too, and, uh, it's, it's, it's bad, it's really bad. Um, I wanna wish everyone on behalf of myself and my wife, everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll look forward to seeing you again in January. And, uh, thank you so much. All right, at this time, I'd, uh, take a motion to go into closed session per General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A, three and six, for attorney-client privilege and personnel. I have a motion?
Same move.
I have a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Now we all stand into closed session.